Welcome and thank you for coming to our regular District Two Twenty Board meeting. It is seven o'clock. Can I get roll call, please? Yes, thank you. Mrs. Gleason?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mrs. Camphorth here, Mrs. List here, Ms. Sterns, Mr. Wickham?
Here.
Mrs. Russell? Here. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the Constitution of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Can I get a motion to approve the September twentieth, twenty twenty-two regular and close meeting minutes?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Wickham, seconded by Mrs. Gleason. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Camphorth, aye. Mrs. List? Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to approve the October eleventh, twenty twenty-two, three, the whole meeting minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Gleason, seconded by Mrs. List. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
I'll stand.
Mr. Johnson?
Okay, good.
Mrs. Camphorth, aye. Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Mrs. Russell?
Aye.
Going on to comments for the public, do we have any public comments? Any public comments? All right, if there are no public comments, I'm going to move on to the superintendent report.
Thank you, Mrs. Russell. First and foremost, congratulations are in order for our very own board member, Mrs. Evelyn Gleason. We would like to publicly recognize her. She's been recently commended for her efforts toward continuous learning and her support in service on the board from the Illinois Association of School Boards. She has attained the level of legacy board leader, and we certainly want to thank her as a board member for giving continued service to our district, to our students, and the field of education in general. So, thank you and congratulations. Second order of congratulations, well, to Renee Mack. She has been instrumental in creating and continuing to develop our Manufacturing Day for our students. For those who aren't aware of that, we have a partnership with South Suburban in addition to some local businesses that give our students opportunities to pursue careers, fields, and manufacturing. So just want to not only commend her for her actions there, but also want to thank our partners, Federal Signal Corporation, Dot Foods, Panduit, and Ability Engineering Technology. The day culminates with our students from each of the four campuses going onsite and having a hands-on, real experience with those companies to just further their opportunities in terms of career selection. So, thank you. It was a big success this October fourth and something that I look forward for us to continue to do for many years. So, thank you to Mrs. Mack and her team. And then finally, I was happy to represent, actually today, four o'clock, the Markham Public Library partnered with our art department and teachers and students painted a mural at the back of the building of Markham Public Library. It's a scenario for students to be able to read, connect, and it's really nice. They did a, and it looks like they're opening a book, and there's a butterfly, our butterfly monarch, butterfly montage in the back there, too. So, happy to represent the district and just the community partnerships that we have with our local organizations like our library. So, overall, just a lot of good news to share.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Moving on to our principal reports.
For our principal's report, I'd like to call up Yazmeen Chika, who has taken on the task of highlighting some great students and staff through our Keepers of the Light program. So Yazmeen, if you want to take it away.
Thank you. So, tonight is a very special night. We are now going to be quarterly recognizing amazing and outstanding students and staff members here in Bremen High School District Two Eight. So, as you can see, we have a pretty packed house tonight. It's because many of these people in this room right now are outstanding, positive, and just overall amazing people who deserve this recognition. And we are going to invite our principals up here, one by one, to recognize one student and one staff member as a Keeper of the Light from each building. So...
Good evening, everybody. Eric Gomez, Observatory Director of Delta Academy. Our two people being highlighted tonight are definitely the Keeper of the Light, and I'll kind of highlight why as I speak about them. But first will be Ms. Dana Dolewicz, our counselor. If you could stand and be recognized, please. Dana's in a unique situation here because counselor at, we, is a new role at Delta Academy, which is our non-traditional setting within the district. And she has really taken this opportunity in a new role to really flourish, to really provide services to students. So, as far as being the Keeper of the Light and providing opportunity for our students in the second chance environment, she is really doing everything that she can within the scope and then beyond. So, obviously, I'm very proud of her myself, and if she didn't work to like to, she could say a little bit about Karma herself, but I think Karma could probably speak about me, Dolewicz, too, about how, while she's doing it within the program. So, great hire, wouldn't say that. Up next is Karma. I told Karma I'd come next to her. So Karma was recommended by Ms. Walker, who was not going to be attending tonight. But nonetheless, Karma is known for her great positive outlook on life, her one-hundred percent attendance at this point, which is great, and also her just general jovial attitude when she comes into school. She's always about fifteen minutes early, which is great. Her unique role that she has picked is that, well, as she's been delegated, is that she selects the scents in the room. Don't tell me any of these guys about it, but she selects the scents in the room, which I'm not sure if you can even share with the board what's in these scents.
She likes scent with pumpkin spice scent.
Oh, yeah. And so, I mean, yes, she's the Keeper of the Light, but she's the one who keeps the scent going. Nonetheless, Karma has to be praised.
All right. Good evening. On behalf of the Titans, my attire is reflective of our spirit week this week that it started with Hello Week, that is part of the Sandy Pope Promise Project. So, that describes why I'm not in Titan red tonight. I don't think my student is here. I know he's one of our football players, and he was going to have some, there was going to be some time constraints from practice to get home to come here. So, I'm going to start with my staff member first with the hopes that our student comes running in a little bit later. I'm very proud to, to, I might even say introduce you to this old veteran here, John Pepper. I'm going to read what Ed Lepowski, so Ed Lepowski was his nominator, so I want to make sure I give him his due credit for his appropriate nomination. And then I have a few other things to add about John. John has been an educator and a coach in the district, District Two Twenty, for over twenty-five years. He continues to fight to make sure that the regular kid receives a quality experience in the classroom on the wrestling mat. He may be a veteran teacher, but he continues to incorporate new ideas and approaches in the classroom and increase his knowledge regarding the latest strategies and technologies. He's been a driving force behind our department's move to modernize our curriculum. His efforts on behalf of his students, which continue well after they've been to the heart of high school, are often quiet, but they're crucial to his students' and his athletes' success. So, that's what Ed Lepowski, his supervisor had to say about him. Again, John and I, I think I might have a year on him, but we're pretty close to walking hallways together for a very long time. And I want to tell you that John, also as the head wrestling coach, he's really my go-to guy. When we need kids to get involved, he takes them under his wing and he gets them involved. You know, whether they wrestle or not, just being out of team, being out of sport, a pretty intense sport nonetheless, he takes everybody, and he makes sure that they have a great experience. And you know what? That's really what we're here for. So, not only does he deliver, you know, great quality instruction in the classroom, he really cares about our kids. So, when I saw he was our selection, he's definitely worthy of this recognition. You're welcome. And Gabe, Gabe is not here, and I'm sad about that because Gabe was my nominee. But when he, if he comes running in, you'll see why he was my nominee, because a smile is going to light up this room. And you know, for, we as educators and the adults in the building, that, you know, we try to go out of our way to make sure that, you know, the kids are, they feel welcome, they feel respected, they feel comfortable. I have to tell you, Gabe does that for us. He comes into the main office every day, and he checks on his, checks in on his main office ladies. I mean, he might know that we have a snack or two for him, too, as we say below. But the fact is, is that Gabriel Coe, just like I said, lights up the room, lights up our day, and I hope he can come up here and you can see what we're talking about. So, I may jump back in if he's running in late.
Yes, that's him.
You made it!
Perfect timing.
Hi, Gabe. I just talked about you. Talked about you again.
Sup, everybody?
So, and I love on here it says Gabriel Sebastian. I didn't know Sebastian was your middle name. But like I said, I'm just going to reiterate one more time. He just comes by and visits us. I mean, obviously, he doesn't have that much business to do in the main office, but he comes in with this smile, asks how everyone's doing, checks in on everybody, and like I said, just really lights up the room. And it's kind of nice to turn around and say that, I know, like I said, as adults, we try to do that for our kids. Here's my morning cheer every day. So, thank you for being an awesome Titan.
Thank you, Dr. Mack.
And he's always dressing snazzy.
Good evening, everybody. Eric Washington, Associate Principal of Hill Press High School, filling in for Mr. Tanner tonight. Have two awards here. First award to Mr. Jim King. He is, he could not be with us tonight, but I will read what Amy DeForty had wrote about Jim. Jim King and his entire staff go above and beyond to make sure that our teachers, students, and staff members have everything they need on a daily basis. His attention to detail makes events, meetings, et cetera, operate efficiently and effectively. He is extremely reliable, and we know that. We can always count on Jim King to do a stellar job at whatever the task or job is. He comes to work with a positive attitude every day. He deserves recognition for this tremendous effort. And I do work with Jim quite a bit, and this is one-hundred percent true. He does a great job for us, keeping our building operating at a high level. Congratulations to Jim. And our student winner, Gerard Bogans. Come on up. He was nominated by Marty Coyle, and Marty says this about Gerard. Gerard has been an outstanding student in our household repair class. Not only has he excelled with shop activities, but he has also been a model student for his classmates. He has advocated for other students in need and has made sure that his peers never feel left out or different for any reason. Gerard has shown that he is not only a bright young man, but also has a kind spirit and looks out for those in need. Congratulations. Thank you, everyone.
Good evening, everyone. Jessica Zentzky from Bremen High School. I'm going to start with my student. We'll make Ms. Meany wait for a second. Janelli Flores, you want to come on up? The board actually heard a little bit. Department of Education actually heard a little bit about Janelli. I think it was last month's board meeting or maybe two months ago when Dr. Sikora shared a little bit about our welcoming club. So, Janelli is the student that we mentioned previously who started the welcoming club at Bremen. And I'm going to read what Ms. Chalpas had to say about Janelli. Janelli is and already has been making great waves at Bremen High School. She has single-handedly started a welcoming club after school for freshman and transfer students. What is the welcoming club? It's a club for anyone but geared for new students who want to meet new friends, spend time together, work on assignments, play games, and just talk. When asked why she started the club, she told Ms. Chalpas that she wanted to give everyone who were new to Bremen a comfortable place to go to learn about the school and to meet people. She then began reaching out to teachers to see if they would be willing to stay for an hour after school, whenever suited their schedules, to help sponsor the club. Several Bremen teachers have offered their time and their rooms to support the welcoming club, and it's a growing group of incredible students. Janelli has a genuine and compassionate heart. She shines brightly for everyone around. So, if anyone should be awarded with the Keeper of the Light Award, it is her. And one more thing to add about Janelli. Janelli is on track to graduate early. She is a junior this year, but is taking a really rigorous course load, and it's jam-packed because she's looking forward to a potential career in pediatric oncology nursing, right? Very impressive young lady, Janelli Flores. Our staff member for Bremen High School, our prep assistant with, I was informed that he's been nominated multiple, come on up, Ms. Meany. Mr. Meany has been nominated multiple times for this over the last couple of years. And when we got the list of nominees and had to narrow it down this year, I was told by our building PR director, no, Mr. Meany doesn't, he will refuse. Well, that's not okay, because Mr. Meany's been doing a great job at Bremen High School. Three different teachers nominated him just for this last quarter, so I'm going to share a few things that they had to say about Mr. Meany. Mr. Meany's relentless pursuit to keep our school environment safe and beautiful is why he should be recognized. He goes above and beyond the call of duty, assisting both staff and students on a daily basis. Another staff member shared that Matt Meany comprises all the characteristics of what it means to be a brave. He always goes above and beyond to make sure the staff members in the building have the fundamentals in order to do their jobs each day, including literally keeping the lights on and working at their peak. More than Mr. Washington could say right now with the power, Dr. Mack. Mr. Meany said that the help of making sure all safety protocols are implemented to ensure the highest level of security at Bremen High School. The students and staff of Bremen know that they can do the complicated parts of their jobs because Mr. Meany takes care of all the behind-the-scenes tasks. And lastly, our third teacher states that Matt is the heartbeat and backbone of the entire school. He's helped guide a peaceful transformation of many different administrators, while also respectively working to create the environment the new administration seeks. Matt makes me feel safe at school and confident that I always have someone who loves Bremen and will be there for me, for us, for staff and students at any time of the day. I work very hard to try to emulate some of Matt's better qualities in interacting with all members of our school and creating a safe environment that feels more natural than forced, a testament to him and all of the others leading Bremen High School. Matt is true definition of a Bremen brave. Without Matt Meany, our building would not be running the way it is. It wouldn't be as beautiful as it is. So, yeah, Matt Meany, keep going. I'm going to switch it up and flip to the side. First, I'm going to bring up here. Come on up for that one. This is Elijah Juan Okenorm. He is humble, to say the least, and probably not very excited to be up here. Actually had the pleasure of going and informing him in front of all of his classmates that he was nominated and won this award, and he was, needless to say, he just wanted class to just continue. He is, if I had one word to describe his nomination for this, it's just all about leadership. That is the theme. So, he's a man of few words, so I'm going to keep it short and simple. Just redo a part of the nomination for him. Elijah Juan holds himself and those around him to a higher standard, which can be seen daily in his classes, in the hallways, and on the football field. He regularly displays a positive mindset and models what a student leader at Oak Forest should be. Elijah Juan is a great role model for any current or future Banglades. So, Elijah Juan, good. Dad wasn't so bad, right? And...
No, he's not here.
All right. So, Mom and Dad, come on up. We're going to... No, no, no. She'll video it. She'll video for you. Come on up. So, I have, I have the pleasure of honoring Matt Spredberry here tonight. Matt is running a little behind. He's not quite here, but we have Mom and Dad who've been his biggest supporters, and the reason he is the person that he is. So, I'm going to speak for a minute about Matt Spredberry. Matt Spredberry is a science teacher here, but he's not just a science teacher. He's been a coach, and he's been a sponsor. And he certainly, we're proud that he's a graduate of Oak Forest High School. Matt's students nominated him for this award as a Keeper of the Light, and I'm going to read probably a little bit more on him. Mr. Spredberry consistently goes above and beyond for his students and for the school. Any question, no matter what it is, is met with enthusiasm. In class, he makes sure that students completely grasp the concept before moving on. He's willing to go back and add more examples to any topic in order to make sure that everyone understands, and he works one-on-one with students. Not only does he answer academic questions, he is always enthusiastic about non-school-related questions, answering with genuine and intelligent answers. He is truly amazing at his job, and it shows every day. He deserves this award because of how much he puts into his job in order to help as many people as possible. Really true of Matt Spredberry, and speaks volumes that comes from his students as well. We're certainly blessed to have him, and thank you for everything you've done to make him into the person he is. We're sorry you can't be here tonight, but we'll make sure that he gets this. And we certainly had a picture when I went and talked to his class. They know how wonderful he is. They were in the midst of a lab, so when the pictures come out on social media, they've all got their goggles on. They were really busy with the lab. Always a scientist, so, so congratulations.
Thank you.
He'll see you before I do.
Oh, sorry, I forgot. Okay, so I came over on this, I got on purpose because I have some other wonderful people to introduce tonight. I'm going to introduce our building presentation. And so, we're all in this beautiful library, and actually, there are four people that work here at Oak Forest High School, and they get to, get to enjoy the surroundings each and every day. And that is two of our librarians, Amanda O'Rourke and Cheryl Harris, and then our two assistants, Karen Prin and Debbie Doyle. Three of them, I know I saw, are here tonight. And they not only maintain this beautiful place and work with the students throughout the day, but they are always coming up with wonderful ideas. So, last year, there was a little bit of conversations, always with, with the teachers, about, about funds, that we had some extra funds with the, the extra funds that were available. And so, I had a conversation with Amanda, and the great thing about working with somebody like Amanda is that all she has to do is say yes. Amanda takes care of everything else. So, she had some wonderful ideas. She's going to share some of those wonderful ideas with you and how that has rolled out. And I think you'll see we have lots of students here tonight as well. So, without further ado, it was very easy to say yes to Amanda and all of her ideas for student engagement and continuously improving Oak Forest High School. So, Amanda and your team. Oh, one other person that's here tonight also is one of our English teachers. There she is, hiding back behind that humongous television. Thank you, Mr. Baswell. Jen Shaw is here to talk also about links between the library and our restaurant. Well, thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, District Two Twenty Board of Education. We have you tonight. Dr. Sikora, our district admin team, and our building admin teams, of course, as well as Dr. Baswell for this giant TV. I must be here tonight. So, thank you so much for everything. I am, like Ms. Zentz said, I'm Amanda O'Rourke. I'm one of the librarians here at Oak Forest High School.
Hi, I'm Jen Shaw. I'm an English teacher here at Oak Forest High School.
Oh, and I'm always behind the camera. My name is Cheryl Harris, and I'm another librarian here at Oak Forest High School.
The three of us could probably talk to you for hours about our passion for reading and the joy that we get from sharing that passion with students and our passion for learning and our passion for reading. But we thought that you might appreciate actually hearing it from students. So, we do have a short video to share with you, made by our book club here at Oak Forest High School, which should hopefully explain some of the major reading initiatives that we do here. We do three of them. And then we'll hit on a couple highlights after the video as well. So, please enjoy.
Oak Forest High School presents...
Bengals Read!
According to the American Library Association, students who report reading for funds are highest on the reading portion for standard and special.
Per the joint position statement by the International Reading Association and the National Council of Teachers of English, leisure reading increases students' reading comprehension, vocabulary development, and general reading comprehension.
According to the research from the University of Sussex, Emory University, The New Yorker, The Journal of Applied Social Psychology, and many more, fiction helps us to explore ideas of change, complex emotions, and, and that.
Just as computers and simulations can help us get to very few complex problems, such as weather planning or forecasting the weather, novel stories and dramas can help us understand the complexities of social...
Among constant book talks...
Independent reading projects...
And reading programs well ahead of all the chats.
We have three year-long reading initiatives we would like to highlight tonight.
For the Lincoln Challenge, you read any or all of the twenty books of a book you know which chosen by a community of students, teachers, and librarians across the state as the best books of the previous year. And then fill out a form to be entered to win free books and other fabulous reading prizes, including an invite to the end-of-the-year reading party and even a reading trophy.
Read four of the twenty-five titles on the Read for Life Time list to receive a certificate from the State of Ohio. It's fun and was great on college applications as a bonus.
For Bengals Read...
Read any book and get a free book. It doesn't get any better. Students have over one hundred thirty titles to choose from for their free book, the most of which were recommended by teachers and students from all the grade levels and departments.
Thank you so much, Book Club. Hopefully you enjoyed it.
Thank you so much. Here's a picture of some of my juniors who read. That's Starla, April, Abilene, and Christian, and they're holding the passes representing all of my juniors and seniors who took advantage of the Bengals Read program and got a free book. And it was just so thrilling. He's a little in there. Oh, sorry. Wasn't sure. So, we just had a little fun with it.
Two, three.
They helped me pick them off, I swear. It was great. So, it was just, it was a game of one-hundred-and-fifty-two pickup. Like, it was just so exciting that all of these kids read books. And they would come back to my room and show me what they got, and we would talk about it. And it was just absolutely thrilling, because it all comes down to choice. Choice is fun. Choice is fun. Choice is power, and choice is everything. When kids come to me and bring me a book that they've picked themselves, I had kids come to me and read a book, inhale it in two days, and say that I had to read it, which I of course did right away. So, when kids pick what they want to read, they pick by their interest. It creates better conversations, better connections, and choice is everything. They become independent readers. I don't have to tell them to read. It doesn't become a chore. It's a joy. So, I am so grateful for this program. It's been so much fun.
And as if that's not enough right there to just tell you how much fun we have, the books are back here. Just wanted to check out any of those titles. Unfortunately, at least as book club status in the video, we had over one-hundred-and-thirty. We do not have that many anymore because so many of them have been taken by students. But it's really, really cool to see how excited they get when they come down and they look at those carts and they get a book, and they're like, can I get another one? How can I get another one? And to hear them say things like, oh, like bring their friends back, and their friends are like, oh, wow, you have good books, you know? Free books, we were going to be given them, you know, like stuff they didn't want to read, but there's, there's just something for everyone over there on those carts, nonfiction, fiction, romance, right, horror, everything. So, it's been just absolutely great, and we've heard that throughout the building. Jen is obviously one of our biggest supporters of reading. I don't know a student who doesn't love her and being in her class, but it's everywhere. It's not even just in the elementary department. We have already given out over five hundred free books. You would think, right, we give kids free books. Now they're reading those free books. They're not going to check out as many books from the library. It's absolutely false, and I have the data to prove it. Our circulation stats for the same amount of time last year have doubled this year. So, kids are taking those books that they get for free, going home, reading it, and then coming back to the library and going, where's more? Can I check out books to take home and keep reading? It's been amazing. The excitement for reading is obvious, and it's just completely contagious. So... So this reading is becoming more and more of a culture here at Oak Forest High School. We plan to continue this for as long as we can. Specifically, I would like to recognize, it's all about our students, and I would like to recognize some specific students who have participated in our Read for a Lifetime and our Lincoln Challenge in the past. As I call your name, if you could, please come join me up here. I'm sorry, I didn't warn the students. I told them they were gonna be standing, but if you could please come over here and join me. Our principal, Ms. Dempsey, would like to recognize you as well. And we're gonna go through just a couple of slides, and I'm gonna talk about what each one is. So the first one, Simran Kritkar, come on up. I know you're here, but... Oh, you're sitting right in front. And Haley Ranowski, they not only participated in the Lincoln Challenge last year, but they read all twenty books on the Lincoln nominees. So if we could just take a minute. I will say it again and again and again, the readers in our school are like the unsung heroes, right? Every kid I recognize tonight is someone who's reading books and then going to their friends and saying, this was great, and you should read this. And they're sharing our programs, and our school's a better place because of them. Simran and Haley also participated in our Read for a Lifetime program. They were recognized already for a certificate by the State of Illinois. We also have Matthew Anthon, if you could come up, Jordan Klein, and Mal, who I do not believe is able to make it tonight, Logan Marquis, Tyler Isaiah Odom, if you could come up as well. Oh, there you are. These are our Read for a Lifetime participants. We also have, and I cannot say enough, first of all, they're responsible for the lovely video that you saw, but I cannot say enough good things about our book club here at Oak Forest High School. These book club students promote reading throughout the school by participating in, okay, so we do have book club students up here as well, but also advertising for our campaigns. They collected and delivered over three hundred children's books to local schools and community charities last year alone. We plan to continue that. And best of all, they're just really true leaders of learning. So we have a couple more book club kids in the audience today that I'd like to call up as well. Monica Fananzio, I saw you here. Come on up. Cecilia, first of all, come on up. She's one of our officers. Bridget Lunch, come on up. And I just have to say, I've seen photos on one of her slides. Bridget has actually written and self-published her own book. Phenomenal. So thank you again so much for allowing us to come and point out how excellent these students are. We have a lot more. We have over twenty kids in book clubs. Not all of them could make it today, but these are just some of our excellent examples. So thank you so much for having us.
You got a picture. Oh, did you get a picture? Oh, um, did you make sure?
Can we get a Keeper of the Light photo? Thank you so much. As you see the carts behind you, if you want to take a look at some of those, if you have a moment, to see some of the different choices that our students had. It really was phenomenal watching the kids at the school, the kids standing around the shelves and talking about books and talking about reading. We do have a reading time during our sip where everyone in the building, the expectation that for twenty minutes out of the building is reading. And it's really, it's kind of an interesting thing to spend the rest of the day, talk to students about, hey, what were you reading during that time? And just start that conversation because reading is just really important. So thank you so much for your time, and thank you for everything that you guys do for the Bengals Read program. So thank you.
Thanks again to the library staff and the Bengals Read program. Students keep reading. That's fantastic to see. So keep up the good work. Congrats to our staff and students who are Keepers of the Light. Tonight, you're welcome to join us. This is an appropriate time too, that if you've got other stuff to do, we understand. You've got homework. If any of the Keepers of the Light could gather with Yasmin for a group photo, she'd take you there in the hallway. But thank you again, and congratulations, parents. Thanks for coming tonight. Keep sending us your wonderful children. We love to have them. So well done. Thank you.
I also just want to congratulate all the students and the recipients of the Keeper of the Light parents. Thank you guys so much for being here and supporting your students and being at the foundation. I really want to acknowledge you guys also, but really thank you very much for everything you've been doing, just so like, going beyond, and really just being awesome. So thank you.
No, Mrs. Foyer requests? All right. Moving on to four point three, Foyer request, Dr. Sepora.
Actually, Mrs. Russler, we've had no Foyer requests.
All right, moving on to board member reports. Any board member reports?
I wanna just go over what you told about last month. I just thought it was necessary to address what happened. Is Clint Alexander's what he did for the school? No, dude, you know, I'm not upset that somebody else came along and moved the program or kept it the same, but in actuality, we have a email from Brad Secoria, January fourth, twenty twenty-two. And he says, I hope I have a happy new year. Everyone have safe and enjoyable holiday. But I just want to get down to some of the numbers. That was the pass rate for semester one. Bremen was ninety-five point two. Tilly Park was ninety-five point nine. Hillcrest was at eighty-two. I mean, I'm sorry, ninety-two. Oak Forest was ninety-seven. As a district, we was at ninety-five point two. Freshmen on track for semester one. Bremen was at ninety-five point eight, Tilly at ninety-six point eight. Hillcrest was at ninety-three point five. Oak Forest was at ninety-eight percent. District is ninety-six percent. Now, last month, we had a presentation by... Presentation by them, by Hillcrest staff. The twenty twenty-two school year had Hillcrest at eighty-five percent, which means to me that it dropped almost ten points. It dropped almost ten points. As far as you giving me an apology, you don't have to. I know you received it. You said you received it.
I'm not sure you're looking for an apology.
Well, you're talking about I didn't have my facts straight. That's why I went to...
First off, it wasn't even a reference to that. It was a reference to other comments that you were making.
The comments about...
What is the basis of your statement right now?
The basis of it is, is that the Hillcrest program has dropped off by almost ten points.
I think you failed to recognize the improvement that continues to be made at Hillcrest, and you want to nitpick at numbers and compare...
I'm only just looking at what I see on paper.
Okay.
He came out there and said that the first semester of twenty, which was twenty twenty-one, that Hillcrest was at ninety-three point five. And then you come back and tell me, well, you know, you should not be so...
You came here with a radical newspaper with false information.
It is not.
So Mark, at this time...
This, what, the newspaper is wrong about what they're offering or what they said? So we should be suing them for slander if this is not true?
You do what you feel is necessary in your personal time. And what I am going to continue to do is recognize the efforts. I think Hillcrest does an amazing job and has been doing an amazing job. And your misunderstanding of information in our presentations, I'm not gonna let that take away from what's wrong that they're making.
Freshman on track is at eighty-five percent.
And I do want the record to show, please let the record show... Please let the record show that Mark's comments represent him and him himself only, and that they do not reflect that of the entire...
Another thing is with this JFA letter, I would like for it to be read.
No. Are there any other board comments?
I would like for it to be read.
I said no.
Why?
Because that's something that's discussed in closed session and remains in closed session.
Why?
And it's still an in-process legal matter, Mark. Nothing in an in-process legal matter is disclosed publicly until the legal matter is resolved.
You know, it involves me, so I should have a right to disclose it.
No, it involves the school board, and it was discussed in closed session and will remain in closed session.
I'm sure you would like to keep it that way. I'd like to avoid it.
Yeah, I'd like to avoid it. I agree with TJ. I'd like to avoid escaping the student.
Didn't sue over weight. Don't get sued anyway.
Any other board comments? Any other board reports?
The School Treasurer's Board met earlier this month, and just as an FYI to everybody, we are in the process of working on renewing Robert Grossi's contract, which expires in January. I personally think he's done an amazing job replacing Joe McDonald, who had done an amazing job. So as a, you know, a guy in his first year of the position, he's done some outstanding work, so we'd like to keep him there.
Thank you.
Any other board member reports? All right, moving on to new business, Ms. Morrison.
Item five point one are the October bills, addendums to bills, payroll, and DVS bills. These items are being recommended for full board approval.
So moved. Second. Moved by Ms. Camporth, second by Ms. Gleason. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mrs. Camporth, aye. Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Mrs. Russler?
Aye.
Item five point two, Mr. Boswell, Dr. Boswell.
Item five point two, approval of school maintenance project grant. Board has discussed at the Committee of the Whole meeting last week. In order to apply for the school maintenance project grant in the State of Illinois, the board must vote to advance our application. Plan on applying these grant funds, if perceived, to offset fifty thousand dollars of our costs for upcoming weapons detector project. The administration brings this forth for a full board approval.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Gleason, second by Mr. Wickham. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Camporth, aye. Mrs. List, aye. Mrs. Russler?
Aye.
Item five point three, Dr. Boswell?
Item five point three is approval of new minibus leases. As discussed last week, the administration is recommending that we complete our new lease for seventeen minibuses for the summer of twenty twenty-three. Our current thirteen minibuses have already been extended for two additional years beyond our original lease and our need of replacement. I recommend securing these buses by completing this order as demand is up and supply is down. The final cost will still not be determined due to extremely volatile interest rates until late spring, but the cost is expected to be around sixteen thousand five hundred dollars per bus annually. We recommend this lease for full board approval.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Wickham, second by Ms. List. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Camporth, aye. Mrs. Russler?
Aye.
Item five point four, Dr. Williams?
Thank you, Mrs. Russler. Five point four, our overnight field trip request for Hillcrest and Tilly Park is presented at Committee of the Whole. These are being recommended for full board approval.
So moved. Second. Moved by Ms. Gleason, second by Ms. List. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Camporth, aye. Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Mrs. Russler?
Aye.
And item five point five, our policy changes to six colon three hundred, which are the graduation requirements as presented at Committee of the Whole. These are being recommended for full board approval.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Wickham, second by Ms. Gleason. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Camporth, aye. Mrs. List?
Aye.
Mrs. Russler?
Aye.
Moving on to personnel recommendations, Dr. Goggins.
In our medical leave, Katie Campbell and Jean Sweeney. Under resignation, Tim Luke, David Gilmore, Valeria Berusko, and Eddie Smith. Under employment, Jacqueline Bergwald, Mariah Kelly, Aisha Johnji, Kelly Hohn, Caitlin Prindle, Joseph Bolick, and Tyrone Hall. And under new positions, three full-time Delta Day teachers. These are being recommended to the full board for approval.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Wickham, second by Ms. List. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mrs. Camporth, aye. Mrs. Russler?
Aye.
All right, our announcements are as follows. Our next regular board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, November fifteenth at seven PM at Tilly Park High School. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Wickham, second by Ms. Gleason. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you guys for a wonderful evening.